Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
Two, three minutes in length or shorter. So like to recognize Michael and Sharon Stevens.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, um, these are my husband Michael's comments, but he really can't speak very well. So he wrote them down. I'm going to read them. He says, I haven't been able to drive for a few years, but I used to like to walk. Then I fell on the uneven sidewalks several times. Now I have to use a wheelchair and I cannot go around my neighborhood because the sidewalks are so bad. The curb cuts are often gone or heaved, the walks are heaved and sometimes are nothing but holes of stones. It's awful. One of the reasons we wanted to live in town was sidewalks and being able to walk. There needs to be a better system than relying on homeowners to replace them. Lack of good sidewalks affects everyone and makes the city look dumpy. I read that there is talk of using federal money for a dog park. Everyone does not have a dog, but everyone uses sidewalks. Please use some money to repair and replace them. Develop a designated fund to use to take care of the sidewalks. Maybe turn to asphalt in the neighborhoods and use a small roller to continuously keep the asphalt sidewalks in repair. This is what we were used to growing up in the Boston suburbs. It may not look as good as concrete, but it would be a hundred percent better.
Now Sharon, I think you cut out slightly towards the end there, but the issue was sidewalks and disrepair. And appreciate your feedback this evening.
Yeah, Sharon, I couldn't catch the last few sentences after the.
Yeah, my internet, my internet is unstable. Imagine that right in the city. Um, I don't know where it dropped out, but.
Right about what he grew up with in Boston.
What? Oh, grew up in Boston. Okay. The Boston suburbs. It may not look as good as concrete, but it would be a hundred percent better than what we have now, which is disgusting. I can't tell you how frustrated I am.
Sidewalks has been a topic of conversation for myself and council over the last couple of years. Appreciate feedback. It's definitely something we need to do and can do more on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else present? I do see Tom Horton. Would you like to speak towards council?
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. Um, I am here to talk about uh, the restoration of the blue curbs, of which there was a moratorium sometime last year for painting any curbs. Um, it was my understanding that at the time that the curbs that were painted needed to be restored uh, to the original or some, something near the original. Um, and I, it was supposed to have been done by spring. My understanding was by the end of April, which I gave it to the end of April. And now that it is May, uh, I am here requesting uh, some uh, either, either progress reports or plan or something, uh, but I hadn't heard anything and I wanted to reach out and ask where we were.
Thank you.
All right. I had spoken with a couple of people on council and the council decision last year was to bring curbs back into compliance. So we are having conversations about how best to affect returning curbs here in natural state.
Is there, is there a timeline for that at all? I'm just curious.
Uh, we've not established a timeline as of yet. Is there anybody else that's present that would like privilege of the floor this evening? Hearing none, seeing none, we can move on to ward reports and Captain McCarthy. Good to see you. First ward.
Good afternoon. I, I wanted to thank DPW for a quick attention to the welcome to Cortland sign on Madison Street. Um, I know they're, they got a plan for repairing that. So thank you for doing that. Um, I have heard from some residents about the federal government funds. Um, several have indicated that they feel that roads would be a very well use for that, um, investment in our infrastructure. I have also heard from several residents that, um, they don't feel a dog park. It's necessarily in the best interest of everyone in the city. Um, so they were not supportive of that idea. Um, and I did hear from someone who suggested uh, doing something similar to what Syracuse has done with the funding for restaurants to kind of drive economic stimulus. So that was an interesting idea to hear that I wanted to share. Um, I also wanted to share that the next community read is taking place on May 10th. I, I can put in the chat if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, if you can share that with everybody, the link to it. But the group is reading Cast the Origins of Our Discontents by Isabel Wilkerson. Um, and that's in partnership with Cortland Forward and the Cortland Free Library uh, to do that. And they do have some copies available for free, or at least they did initially. So if people are still interested, there's still time to sign up. Um, and I started reading a little bit of the book and what I've read so far is very interesting. So. And I think that's it for the first word.
Outstanding. Second ward, Katie Silliman.
Things have been very quiet in the second ward and partly due to COVID and the fact that, um, people aren't gathering as much. So our student neighbors have not been able to celebrate the end of the school year in their customary fashion. And they're packing up and getting ready to go, but also partly because of the efforts of the police department. I've seen, um, people walking the rounds and I really, really appreciate that. So some of us have been able to sleep with our windows open on a warm night, um, for the first time in a long time. I've also heard from constituents about the blue lines on the, on the curbing. I was reminded that the curbs are a city property and one person likened the, the blue paint on the curbs to graffiti. So you're not allowed to paint on other city property. Why should you be able to paint the curves? Um, and I, I have to agree with that. Another constituent said that, um, blue curbs mean it's handicap parking and does that mean she can park her car at the intersection of Grotten Ave and Broadway? Because there's a blue curb there. So this is, this is an issue that we do need to take care of. And I know it's going to be hard for the community. I know that there are people who painted their curbs because they wanted to support our police department. So, um, we're going to have to do this well, settle this problem well. And I've also heard about the sidewalks. So I was really happy to hear the Stevens talk about them. Because sidewalks, I think we can agree affect everybody in the community. And so I hope that we do expand our sidewalk program and get more proactive about um, telling people that they have to deal with their sidewalks uh, moving forward. And it would really clean up the look of the city as well as make, um, for better mobility. And I want to thank the mayor and Bruce Titler for leading cleanup crews this past weekend. Thank you very much. And I want to encourage people to clean up their own properties. Um, I get a little trash in front of mine every day. A lot of red solo cups, masks surprisingly. And, um, other flotsam and jetsam from people driving by or walking by. And we pick it up and I'd appreciate it if other people did too. Thanks.
Good. Thank you, Katie. Third ward, Bruce Titler.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a fairly lengthy war report tonight. First, I want to thank our recent retired superintendent of public works. Um, uh, of healthy retirement and a long retirement. Best pleasure to see you, Chris. I, I hope, uh, you know, you have a, have a great rest of your adventures there. Um, I also, at some point, Mayor, I was hoping maybe we could get Nick Doby to give us another little update about streets that are going to be um, in the next couple of weeks paved or milled or whatever, you know, you know, I saw Florida was closed some. And I do know that the water board had notified folks of that. So people, you know, we're used to living with the construction and the construction season, but it's nice if you can get a little bit of a, of a heads up, especially, you know, before you head out Monday morning to your commute. Um, and I'm also, um, suggesting that the council and the mayor that we spend every penny we have for road repair this construction season. Um, first, we need it. And second, I don't think we want to leave anything there for the state to try to claw back later on this year or next year. So I think we spend every penny and, and go with it. Um, I also want to thank all the volunteers that helped clean up the city this past weekend. And Mayor, thank you for, um, your part on Saturday. I noticed quite a few orange bags over there in the DPW uh, dumpster. So we cleaned up quite a bit of trash in two days. So thanks to everybody that helped out with that. Um, going forward, there's a couple of things I'd also, I'm, I'm getting complaints on some code issues and some zoning issues. And I, I would like first, maybe in our next meeting, uh, either code or zone could spend a few minutes talking about what they do, the process. Um, code could be first, though I don't care. We could do both the same meeting, but it might be, it might be too long. So I'd like to set up some presentations by those two departments. So I don't think everybody understands the zoning and code. They do have different roles. I think sometimes people, uh, mix those roles up. So it'll be good for us to go down there. And I'm getting complaints on zoning and codes. And I talked to Captain 10K. So I'd like to suggest, uh, our next meeting, Mayor, if we could have a discussion on, on possibly requiring the private haulers to be on the same schedule as the city, um, and we can have Captain 10K speak to that next time. That, that was one of the things he thought would help his department, uh, when they're getting complaints on trash. Um, I also received some, some calls on blue curbing. I agree with Katie. That's something that we have to figure out and get resolved. And, um, and take care of that. And I guess lastly, I want to echo what a few folks have said about the sidewalks. They are in need of repair. And I also suggest that we, it's time to start discussing a sidewalk fee program similar to what other communities have done to, to create a fund to fix those sidewalks. Um, I'm not sure if it's going to work if, if we just all of a sudden tell all the landowners, you have to get those, those sidewalks repaired. It might be a, I mean, if, if the community doesn't want to do a sidewalk fee, then we have no choice but to, um, um, push that back on all the landowners, uh, homeowners. And, and there's, I'd like to start a discussion on that, um, soon. And some other communities have had success with that. And I think that might be one of the ways we can maybe start to get a handle on this. It'll be similar to what we did with the wastewater fee. So, uh, that's my report. And, uh, I look forward to some discussion on, on a couple of these items. And I agree wholeheartedly that the sidewalks and the curb cuts have to be addressed and that they have to be addressed starting this season.
Very good. Um, moving to the fifth ward, Jackie Chapman.
Um, I just wanted to start by saying, uh, Cortland is very, very, very fortunate. We have so many types of trees that are flowering trees and you drive down so many of the avenues and so many of the streets. And it's, it's beautiful. It's heartening and it just makes you happy. And so in that way, we are very fortunate. Uh, so enjoy all the beauty of the spring, everyone. And hopefully in time we will be addressing the sidewalks so that in future, in future spring seasons, people can walk the avenues and enjoy the spring. Um, there, I've had a couple of concerns and calls from residents, uh, concerned and wanting to understand better, you know, what's going on on different streets? And what, what is the work being done and why is it being done? And I've been trying to look into all of that for them. I know, you know, they have given us some very specific lists. So I was going to get that information out to the people who've asked. Um, I've had a couple of residents in my ward, um, very concerned lately with landlords who bought up a large number of streets, uh, homes on a street. And they're just in very bad disrepair and they really are concerned about, you know, how we can motivate landlords to to step up. Um, and I also wanted just to thank everyone who came out to the community cleanup. And I think it made a big difference. Uh, and I think that's it from this one right now.
Very good. Thank you, Jackie. Moving up to the seventh ward, Troy M. Beckwith, senior.
Hey, Mayor. Um, I want to, I guess since it was brought up, the blue curbing wasn't on my list, but it's definitely something I do believe that we set a date that need to be done. And obviously I think we need to move forward with it sooner than later. We did make the decision. We all voted on it. Needs to get taken care of. So I think we, whatever we need to do, it needs to get done now. Um, just, uh, obviously a little update on Clinton Ave. Um, Nick's on my speed dial. So he's been doing really good though. We're getting through it. Still getting a lot of complaints, but, uh, um, anyways, we're, uh, hopefully we can get through it and people just got to have some patience. There are a lot of concerns that we're addressing and, uh, hopefully we'll get them worked out. Other than that, if we let.
Good. Thank you, Troy. And the eighth ward, Tom Michaels.
Uh, good eve, good evening, everyone. Uh, just, uh, just one item to date. Uh, we had a storm drain cover that had broken loose over the winter time. And apparently somebody had hit it again. And I want to thank DPW for, uh, uh, getting right on this and, and put a cone out there and moving the item uh, back to where it should have been, uh, before a motor vehicle had struck it again. And, uh, that's, that's the only thing I have for tonight. Uh, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Mayor's report, a couple of items here. Uh, several of you may have seen that we had the House or excuse me, the Senate Majority Leader, our very own Senator Charles Schumer was in town yesterday. And this is something that developed quite quickly. Uh, I got a call late Thursday, basically after work hours from his rep, uh, asking if we would entertain a visit. And considering how good of a friend he has been to the community, certainly. So we arranged for Monday morning. And, uh, he was very excited about the American Rescue Plan and the opportunity for funding coming in, not just to local municipalities, but in particular childcare was the focus of his talk Monday, yesterday. And I made sure during my opening comments to talk about how the, uh, funding from the American Rescue Plan is beneficial to the city. As we've discussed in our meetings, we know we've had a number of Band-Aids on the budget. We did a lot of, uh, we made some challenging decisions last year. And we still have some things that we needed to make whole for us to continue to function as well as we can. And the money that will be coming to the childcare entities hopefully will be enough to help them not just move forward, but also for entities that have reduced service, uh, and some that may have shut down, be able to reopen. And there are fewer childcare slots now than there were pre-COVID. And pre-COVID, there were only enough childcare slots for one out of every three children in Cortland County. So basically if you are a parent and you have a kid that is under the age of five and you want to work or two parents and you both want to work, you are going to have a hard time finding a good childcare program. I can say that speaking from personal experience. However, investing in our children is investing in our future. And the Senator knows that. He's heard this not just from Portland County, but throughout New York State in terms of residents. Uh, so there is good news in terms of childcare, good news in terms of local government. And as we're seeing a lot more good news with some other things which we'll discuss this evening. We're going in the right direction and the help was much appreciated, is much appreciated. We did have, as was mentioned, the community cleanup. And I also would like to thank a number of community volunteers that came out. We had a very nice group on Saturday morning and then Bruce Titler helped coordinate things on Sunday. Little bit chilly Saturday morning, not gonna lie, 32 degrees and had to use the wipers to get the snow off the car. And I was getting ready to go to swim practice from cleanup. I still was brushing snow off the car. But, uh, it was effective. We cleaned up a lot of litter, a lot of trash, a lot of recyclables that had blown about. And I can tell you, there's at least one person out there that was appreciative because somebody had lost a driver's license and I found that and was able to return it to the rightful owner with some assistance from Tim Bennett. So Tim Bennett from the Cortland Voice, thank you for tagging along. Uh, sleuthing and figuring out who the individual, finding the contact information for the individual. Uh, they were very appreciative. If you've not been around to the parks, there's some good news. I believe we've gotten the basketball hoops back up throughout the community. And I know there was some angst and there was some concern about not having them up sooner. Uh, we talked about the middle of May and over the last couple of weeks, if you've been following the county website, you know that we've continued to average between essentially 55 and 60 cases in Cortland County. And that has stayed flat. It's stayed level for the last month or so. So thank you to John McNerney and his crew in particular for going out, getting that done. And, uh, giving our kids, all of our community members, another opportunity to recreate. We are asking people still, practice your COVID precautions. And it's difficult in terms about distancing, in particular in basketball. Masks are difficult when you're exercising, but we want to make sure that we are not allowing those numbers to creep up on us. And as we're all doing our part, hopefully people are continuing to get vaccinated. More opportunities exist. And as we're moving forward, then we'll be able to continue to do these things. Uh, speaking of activities in your bureau, John, I'm going to give a plug here. We are in need of lifeguards. So we need lifeguards. And I actually was down at Yaman Beach and I, I believe the new sand is down. I don't know, John, if you would like to speak a little bit about that. You turn your mic on.
Well, I'm going to pass the buck to you.
That's fine. Um, we're fortunate enough to, uh, put 300 tons of sand on Yaman Beach last week. Uh, thanks to the Yaman Foundation and their generous donation of $15,000 and, uh, some funds from our operating budget. Um, and, uh, we're able to, uh, lay all the sand and spread it on the beach. And, uh, we had some special support from Suit Coat, who happens to be doing a bridge project near Yaman Park and had some heavy equipment and they lent a hand. So, uh, kudos to those folks. But, uh, a huge improvement, uh, with the new sand on the beach. The last time we replaced that quantity of sand was 2005 after we had a major flood. So, um, I think swimmers will see the improvements come Memorial Day. It's hard to believe. It's only a few weeks away, but that's our plan to open up that facility on Memorial Day weekend. Um, I will echo what the mayor says. Uh, we do have a need for lifeguards. Um, it's just not only in, in Cortland, but it's a, it's a problem within the recreation field. Uh, folks who recall because of COVID, uh, a lot of the colleges, YMCA's, YWCAs, um, high schools that traditionally teach lifeguard saving classes, um, have been on hiatus and haven't taught the class. So, uh, we've been struggling to find lifeguards. We typically hire, um, 18 to 20 lifeguards. And I think, uh, to date we have 10. So we're working hard to continue to, to try to secure additional lifeguards. So if anybody out there is listening and is interested in a summer job, uh, you can reach out to me and I can tell you the steps that need to be taken to get certified and, uh, signed up for a course.
John, salary and hours typically for that?
Mm-hmm. Our, our season traditionally goes Memorial Day weekend to late in August. Uh, we're open seven days a week. Um, our facilities are open from 11:00 AM till 7:00 PM for general public. Uh, we do have an early bird swim program, 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM. But, um, we, our pay salary is between 12:50 an hour up to 14 based on experience.
Very good. And, um, a- as John mentioned, if you know of somebody who's a proficient swimmer, but they may not be certified, um, pre-exam, they have to do a 300 yard swim. You got to be able to dive down about eight feet deep and do some, uh, retrieval underwater. But if they're a proficient swimmer, there is an opportunity to get people certified. It's a great job and an opportunity, not just for kids, but for anybody that's looking to, uh, have a good summer, make some money. And we need, otherwise we may have some issues in terms of hours for our facilities. Am I correct, John?
We are. So, you know, we're hoping that we're able to fill all the positions needed to open both facilities at peak times. We will open Yaman Beach Memorial Day weekend for the first month. And then we'll assess where we're at come June time, uh, when school lets out and we open up Whitwire Pool. Um, our B, B plan, uh, which I've discussed with my youth bureau advisory board, uh, may possibly be where we'd open uh, the pool Monday through Friday and the beach on weekends and holidays. But, uh, hopefully we don't get to that point. Um, if we can recruit some additional lifeguards, uh, we'll be good. I'm pleased to say that we'll also have the splash pad open this year, um, which was very popular last year with the younger families and tots. And I'm super excited to show off, uh, the new pool house. Uh, that renovation project has been completed. Um, it's, uh, it's outstanding and all the amenities that go with it. And if you've been to Sogga Park, you've probably seen the exterior, but the inside is equally as good. Um, we have park benches. We have shade structures that are going up. Um, it, it's going to be a real asset to the community.
Outstanding. Yep. So parents, get your kids out of the house. Get them to be lifeguards. John, thank you and thank you for the work. I know there's a lot that goes into it, not just what people see, but also behind the scenes.
Thank you.
Couple more things just to wrap up. And I had a reminder in the chat and I do appreciate it. Uh, dog owners, please make sure you're cleaning up. Clean up after your dogs. And that was maybe a little bit of an issue during community cleanup. It's not easy for people to clean that stuff up. But little bags and taking care of that is important. And, uh, in terms of the parks, the restrooms are not open yet. We will get those open at some point. But want to make sure that we are, uh, asking people, John McNerney again.
Yeah, we are slowly opening up restrooms. Um, we do have, uh, programs opening up this weekend. We kick off our opening day of Crown City Little League Baseball as well as some of our softball programs. Uh, the high school teams are also playing in the park, so they will be open periodically. Uh, we did kick off, um, this week, our park patrol position that goes around, opens bathrooms, closes bathrooms, turns on ball field lights and just general policing of the park, uh, because we're seeing a spike in activity.
Hey, John, do you have a timeframe when you're, when the bathrooms are open on the weekends? You know, Sogga, Bedexter, Oldry, is there, or is it just a hit or miss kind of thing?
It, it's typically when we have an activity in, in the park. So when games are taking place, um, or the high school is playing games, park patrol starts at 5:30 and is on until about 11:00 PM during the evening. We've had a problem with vandalism, just opening them up randomly throughout the day. And we don't have the staff to monitor them until we get into the summer months.
Okay. So if, if folks are having like birthday, and I, I noticed that, uh, that people are having cookouts and birthday parties and things in the park. The bathroom, the people, the bathrooms will not be open for those if it's on a Saturday or Sunday, then they'll have to.
Unless they've reserved and rented a facility.
Okay, got it. All right. Okay. Thanks, John.
Very good. Thank you, John. And it was mentioned earlier by Alderman Titler, like to, um, also publicly thank and recognize Christopher Bastokie and his retirement. So he had, uh, been a public employee for a number of years, the last 17, I believe, with the city of Portland. And, um, you know, there's a lot of different projects and a lot of things that we undertake. And I shared this story, one of the biggest concerns, we've had a fair amount of flooding through the city over the years and in particular groundwater. And there was no one simple solution. And the replacement of culverts, the replacement of bridges in particular that go down Otter Creek, all the way from the waterworks to the west branch of the Tiak Nioga has been important. And Public Works has very diligently and methodically replaced a number of those places. And those are what we call pinch points. They make it narrow, water gets backed up. Uh, Chris has also been creative and innovative and done some other things that have. Uh Chris has also been creative and innovative and done some other things that have uh really helped to reduce that flow of water heading out there. And currently, we are wrapping up this year a major overhaul with our water treatment plant over at the waterworks. And this is one of those things that going forward, people don't know about, you don't hear about, but absolutely is critical for us to continue to deliver water in an effective manner. And to know that we can do so safely and efficiently many years into the future. So if you know Chris, or if you don't, and you happen to see him, say thank you. And uh had a platform and a shirt and one of the statements on it was, water, people, vehicles, all move because of you. Didn't really get into what kind of water. Let's just say all of it. My hats off and a round of applause for Chris Bastokie. A big thank you. Sounds much better when we're not muted, but I appreciate it. We can see everybody clapping. Uh last two things in terms of mayor's report, we do have the sidewalk program. And we heard, we've heard, and we do hear about how we need sidewalks to be repaired and placed. And the city, we've been encouraging for years that homeowners replace and repair. Uh this opened up yesterday officially on the website, the city's website, and you could also go to Toma Development at thirty two, at thirty-four Tompkins to pick up a application. But we highly encourage if you have the need to replace your sidewalk, please let us help you. We wanna continue to work on this. But as we're hearing, the program is there, but if we're not taking advantage of it, we we need to do more. And finally, I'll ask council for an executive session at the end to discuss uh potential labor agreement, and I would anticipate action afterwards. So council with approval, executive session at the end.
Yes.
Yes. Hey, hey, Mayor. I have a question, Mayor. Uh before we go into the rest of the agenda, I thought maybe you're gonna have Nick speak in the mayor's report like you did last time. I I don't know. You know, can we give him a couple of minutes to talk about upcoming uh street repairs and maybe make that a general, a regular part of the agenda? Until, you know, the season is over, just to give people a heads up kind of thing.
Very good. Nick.
What's up, everybody? Um as you can see, we have a lot of roads tore up uh within the city of Corland. Uh we started this week, uh the milling process on the, I believe, nine streets that we are doing uh this construction season. We are finished with Floral Ave um between Madison and Groton Ave. We are halfway through Delaware. We will be done with that tomorrow. Um Wadsworth and Van Huesen are also completed uh as far, as far as the milling process. Um tomorrow is going to be Pleasant and Plaza Drive and the rest of Delaware. And then probably weather depending, Thursday into Friday, will be Franklin Street, Salisbury, and Excelsior. Um so we have crews on all those roads uh or will very, very soon. Um other things that you're probably seeing um are the water department doing all the non-copper connections. Uh a lot of the roads that we targeted for pavement this year also had um non-copper uh services on them. So they're working to re- replace those as we go through and mill and pave, uh obviously before the paving process. Um we will get in, I think, next week, is brush week? I believe, or the week after. I think it's next week. Um so then we'll get into those streets that we milled and do all our manhole catch basin, water gate adjustments. Um and before we can turn around and really pave. Uh as as far as funding and stuff goes, we did have a rollover of CHIPS money last year. Um I have a plan to buy a couple pieces of equipment with some of the money, probably pave upwards to uh in-house about a half a million dollars in paving for this year with our own forces, which is pretty good for us. Uh and then we're also, uh we were granted some uh money from the state as far as upgrades on the touring routes. Um and we're looking for, um we're we're looking to uh put in some new curbs and pavement um on Groton Ave and possibly Wego. Uh we do also still have our south side drainage project that we're gonna pick back up about midsummer, which is from Yates Place to the city line on Wego, uh which is storm sewer. We still have to do some sewer lateral um insulations and also uh sewer main on a portion of Scammel. We've also got North Green Bush and um that is getting water main and pavement. Um and no, North, North Green Bush is just water main. It's outside the street. Washington Street is uh actually um looking at a new water main and pavement. Uh we will be doing both of those um um items in-house and uh basically recouping money for in-kind services. So we we've got a very, very busy summer. Uh if you guys want uh any specifics on uh funding or the breakdown of what we're doing, uh we're looking at basically between CHIPS, Pave New York, and extreme weather recovery funds. Uh and also the uh New York State Touring Route money that basically threw my whole plan out the window last week. Uh we're we're looking at one point six five million dollars in street work. Uh and that is not including the gateway. So we, I I think that we can spend most of this money um this year. And I I'm making the best effort to to get the best bang for our buck. Um if you guys have any questions, just let me know. Uh we are super busy, uh but I think new curbs on Groton Ave uh and uh full pavement from the bridge on Otter Creek to the city line is gonna be a big improvement. I mean, I'm not saying you have to name it after me or anything like that, but I I I think it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you, Nick. That is a heck of a workload you folks have cut out for yourselves this summer, so thank you.
Yeah, I, the, most of the stuff we are trying to to retain in-house. A couple of things that we're not um because we just don't have the the personnel or the the hours in the day, um is the the curbing work. Uh we'll leave that up to the professionals. Um and also, um we're we're, we we're extending a contract with Adhand Piping uh to look at some of the curbs in those areas. Um and also Suit Coat has agreed to in um mid-June, early July, uh provide us the services for Groton Ave um from the city line to the bridge. Um and I think two local contractors keep business, businesses going, keep people working uh as well as the stuff that we have on our plate is is, you know, uh very positive.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah. And don't forget the curb cuts wherever you can make them, Nick.
Yep. Well, we we also on Groton Ave, just so you know, two uh Groton Ave and uh two spots uh in speaking of pavement and or ADA compliant curb cuts and ramps, uh we do have a pedestrian safety action plan uh that is being uh that came out through CNS engineered, CNS engineers, and it's gonna take, put a crosswalk um primarily for students uh over near the Tommage Tire and Ple- and Pleasant Street uh in that intersection where, you know, getting across that, either, either way across Homer or across Groton is kind of tough. Uh we're gonna have uh pedestrian signals up there in a crosswalk and then upgraded uh crosswalks, curb cuts, and the whole nine on Groton at Townley and Floral, and then also Madison at uh Floral as well. So taking care of some of the main intersections and 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 getting a lot of work done.
Thank you. Thanks, Nick.
Yep. And and if, again, if any of you want uh to look at the financials and stuff like that, I have uh all that pretty readily available and I can send it along.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. And last, before our first official agenda item, minutes from our last meeting. We have motion to consider filing the minutes as is Katie Sullivan, second Bruce Tyler discussion. Any concerns regarding the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of filing as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Give me a wave. Thank you. Any opposed? Consider them filed. And excited about this, consideration of a resolution to approve the Dairy Day Parade permit for reverse parade, street closures of South Main from Tompkins to Valley View from four PM until eight PM, and that is June one, on June first of two thousand and twenty-one. Like to entertain a motion to consider Jackie Chapman, second one, second by Troy Beckwith, discussion. And I'm looking on my screen, we do have and sometimes people get booted, but we did have representatives. Are there questions from council?
No.
Very good. So for those who are unaware, let me give a quick overview. I'm looking around here and I'm not seeing, I believe our guest may have may have gotten booted.
Are you looking for me, Mayor?
There you are. Now, hello, Andrea. Oh, good lord. Right in the, right in the front and center. I should have seen you. Uh so Andrea, I think we've got a uh excited group on council here. Do you wanna explain for everybody what's planned? Because there are some people probably attending from the general public tonight that may not have been at our last council meeting.
Awesome. So I I think we're all set with this. We've been working really hard at getting everything filed the way it needs to be. Um our tentative plan is for June first to kick off June Dairy Month with our Dairy Parade moving down to South Main, starting from uh Port Watson, Tompkins Street, and heading towards Valley View or Scammel Street, wherever we end right there. Our participants or our normal uh floats will be stationary on both sides, the east and the west side of West Main, I'm sorry, of South Main. And um any vehicles that wanna come will come either from Port Watson, Tompkins, or Main Street, and they will head down South Main. We will keep them moving. At the end of the parade route, we're gonna give everybody a bag of dairy products, uh just a small bag. Oh, sorry. Um but I think we're we're on the right track. The applications are ready to go and we're we're excited about it.
Standing.
And I just have, I just have one question. It's it's only because I'm wondering, i- is there, is there a direction you would prefer cars to travel north or south on on Main Street to come by? Would they make it, to make it smoother or, you know, the flow of traffic? Or doesn't it matter? I'm I'm just asking.
So we're gonna have them start from the intersection and head towards Valley View. So they'll start at the intersection of North Main. I'm sorry, I keep saying, so they'll start on Main um and head down south towards Scammel. I don't know, Chief Sandy, if I'm saying this right.
You want us going south, you want us going south past Tompkins, Port Watson. You want the cars to head south as much as possible to view the floats. That's what you're saying.
It's gonna be one way, is, yes. So South Main is gonna become a one-way street. And vehicles will only be able to go down one way on that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that.
So the preference here is a drive through a uh reverse braid where the cars to spectate are driving down. And the cars obviously will be moving fairly slowly. Uh there is an opportunity for pedestrians as well. And I'm looking at the COVID safety plan. There will be some volunteers. We'll have some uh officers from the police department as well. But we're asking, and Andrea, correct me if I miss anything, but pedestrians can enter many entry point along the parade route. So if you're walking, for example, from a Wego and you come up Union Street, that will get you there. And we're asking that people travel, if you're on the west side of the street, that you go from north to south. So the west side would be the Union, Scammel, Pine, Frederick's side of the street. And when you get to the end of the parade, then safely cross the street and there'll be an opportunity, make sure that we're crossing people safely. Uh but cross the street and then travel north on the east side. So the east side would be Valley View. Oh gosh, gotta look at the map. Valley View, Randall, William, uh Huntington. And so basically, counterclockwise around the parade. So people, if you do wanna walk, and we are highly encouraging people to drive. Um Andrea, talking six thirty for the start time, correct?
Yes.
And if we are encountering some traffic, asking everybody to please maintain your patience. Uh floats aren't going anywhere until people have had the opportunity. It's gonna be difficult for them to leave with parade of cars coming through. And I'll tell you, one of my favorite things has been being downtown. And it's also an opportunity to support local business. And Andrea, I know that you and your crew have put a lot of time and effort into this, so as people are heading downtown, uh thank the volunteers. You know, they're taking their time. And uh patronize our local businesses downtown. Get the opportunity to grab a bite to eat, something to drink, and enjoy the start of June and the start of um events coming back. Okay. Were there any questions, Randy, about the parade and anything else with the organization of?
Uh it's it's not so much about the parade, Mayor, but I'd like you and the council to consider us canceling our meeting that night so that we can also drive down that street and 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 take a look at the floats and and also be part of that. Uh it's gonna be harder for having a seven o'clock meeting. It's gonna be difficult for us to do that. So I'll throw that out there.
Should we cancel the meeting before or after approving the parade? Cancel the meeting.
It's been known to happen in the past, Mayor. It's not exactly an earth-shattering idea.
Well, I think it's a great suggestion. Uh further discussion regarding the parade. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Very good. Number two is related to number one, resolution to approve the Dairy Day Parade Sound Device Permit Application and to waive the application fee. Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second, Tom Michaels, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And hey, Andrea, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. We're really excited to see um some sort of normalcy coming back. And as a dairy promoter, this is especially exciting for us to see the Dairy Parade in whatever form this looks like happening. So I thank you for your support in this and I really hope you guys do attend. I will give you a bag of chocolate milk personally if you make it to the end.
Well, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you for working so hard on your application and making sure all the safety precautions were in place. I really appreciate that.
We wanna make sure we're doing our part to keep everyone safe, so we'll we'll do whatever needs to happen.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Plan on being there with cow bells on. All right. And then the suggestion, uh council, I don't think we need a formal action, but are we okay with canceling the meeting that would otherwise be scheduled for June first?
Uh I am.
I'll second that. I don't think legally I can, but.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll second.
I make a motion that we cancel the June first meeting. And so that we can participate in the Dairy Parade. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Got Tom, discussion. Very good. All those in favor of canceling our meeting June first, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good. So just one more incentive. For those of you who have been home and diligently watching council meetings, I know we're entertaining, but the parade will be even more. Andrea, thank you once again. Uh agenda item number three, consideration of a resolution to approve the Prayer in the Park event on May sixth of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh like to add, May sixth of two thousand and twenty-one were potentially at a later date upon approval of the police chief and mayor. So in discussion, trading emails, uh one of the organizers has been out of town for the last week and is questioning whether or not they are ready to do this on May sixth. So by giving a later date with approval from the police chief and the mayor, then we're still giving the opportunity and not having to revisit um if we're covering everything tonight. So minor modification. Do we have a motion to consider? Jackie Chapman, second, Troy Beckwith, discussion.
What what park are we referring to here, Mayor?
Well, it's Courthouse Park and um this is, there is a safety plan, the New York Forward Safety Plan template was filled out in terms of the organization faith Baptist Church. And in terms of how they do it, and they would maintain the same safety protocols.
Okay.
Okay, I saw that and I thought it was relating to their church. Okay, I saw that and I thought it was relating to their church services. I didn't realize that was the prayer in the park.
Basically, he's saying what we've been doing, what was approved by the state is what we will do. Uh, it's a, it has taken place, it's been a small gathering. And it's an opportunity for people to come together on what is National Day of Prayer.
Okay.
Yep. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, resolution to accept, recognize and appropriate the following donation to the youth bureau. And we've got a donation going to the youth center from Art Alyssa Ekstrom, motion to consider. Kat McCarthy, second, Troy Beckwith, discussion.
Thank you, Art Alyssa.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Yep, youth center is a great place for a lot of the kids in our community. And number five, resolution to lift the hiring freeze. To hire a youth services specialist in the youth bureau to fill a vacancy uh due to registration, individual moved on to a different position. Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second, Bruce Titler, discussion.
What exactly does a youth specialist do, John? Yep. So the youth services specialist is a position within the youth bureau department. And their focus is on um teen services and youth services primarily hubbed out of our youth center. Um, I included the job description uh from civil service on the position. Um, it's kind of bittersweet because the person that's held the position has moved on to SUNY Cortland. Um, so I'm happy for her. Uh, it's a, it's an advancement for her. But uh it's a position that uh we desperately need uh for the function of our youth center. Um, Heather Johnson, who is our youth services supervisor at the youth center, she's present tonight too, so we can answer any questions. Um, about the position. Um, I'll just go over some basic stats and Heather, feel free to chime in, but. Uh, last year was a challenging year with COVID at our youth center, but uh some of the highlights from two thousand and nineteen. Included forty-three hundred and six um teens attended the youth center from January, uh throughout the course of the year. Um, took sixty-two kids on field trips, uh served over twelve hundred meals. Um, a wide variety of, of programming uh for teens take place at our youth center. Um, our youth center sees. Um, unfortunately, a lot of disadvantage uh children in our community that uh acts almost as a home, in a safe haven. Uh, for kids after school and in the evenings. Um. Heather, I'm not sure if you want to add anything. Uh, we can share with you folks and I, I know the mayor has seen it. Um, our annual report and data on the youth center. Um, I know she has put together a calendar. Uh, of May activities and they're pretty extensive. Heather, do you want to chime in on any?
Yeah, I mean, I can mention a few things that Lori's position is in charge of. Um. She was taking on a music program. We have music, music lessons um that are gonna start back up actually next week. We loan out instruments to kids who can't afford them for free. Um, and we try to do open mic nights, which we're gonna try and get back into that too. Um, she does trip planning kitchen program. Um, we're trying to get back involved into the skate park, the prom closet, which I think a lot of people know about. The youth employment program, we hire teens fourteen to eighteen years old, they basically are able to shadow us. Um, throughout the programs, girls group collaborating with the high school, I mean, there's just like a few things that her position does. Um, I believe like her job description goes, you know, way outside of the youth services position as well. We're also on the rec side too, you know, answering phone calls, um booking facilities, you know, booking fields, the athletics and. Programs on that side too, um also in charge of, charge of both community gardens. So not feeling her position would be, you know, tough. I feel like we're bare bones as it is, so. Hoping to, you know, get that filled.
Hey, thank, thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, everyone, and um Heather and John, thank you for being here and speaking on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, giving a lot of opportunities to kids in the community and it doesn't happen without a dedicated staff, which we have in our youth bureau. Item number six, resolution to recognize and appropriate proceeds from the April seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one K nine barbecue fundraiser that was hosted by Anderson's Farm Market. In the amount of four thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars to the Portland City Police Department K nine Fund. Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second, Tom Michaels, discussion. Uh, Chief Sandy, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we would just like to publicly thank um the D Hearts who run Anderson's for all their time and generosity. And doing this uh fundraiser for our K nine. As people understand, the K nine is fully supported by donations. And we want to thank the community for turning out um in such mass support. Um, there were pre-sales, uh this. Barbecue was sold out two days in advance. Um, simply amazing. Thank you all.
Yep. Very good. Much appreciated support of our K nine program. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Yep, like to add my thanks, we always appreciate the assistance from people in the community, helping make in particular our specialty programs. Multiple departments, you know, it's, we've got budgets, but it's also important for us to be able to do a little bit more. And generosity is greatly appreciated. Item number seven, I'm adding a name, it's consideration of a resolution to designate Matt Cook, Cheryl Doolittle and Laura Morak as signatories. On all accounts. So adding Matt Cook to the other two names, Cheryl Doolittle and Laura Morak. Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Uh, let's see, agenda item number eight, consideration of resolution to authorize the purchase of forty-five sets of firefighter personal protective equipment called bunker gear. From Fire and Croker Corp. in the amount of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. Compliant with New York State bid contract pricing. Motion to consider. Uh, Troy Beckwith, second, Bruce Titler, discussion. And there is. Supporting documentation for council in your email you did not have a chance to see from the chief. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. And number. Yeah, number nine, resolution to transfer six hundred thousand dollars from the November two thousand and nineteen Public Improvement Ban earmarked for the Wick Wire Pool. Locker room project to the fire station windows project to provide operating capital for grant reimbursed costs. Uh, motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second, Bruce Titler, discussion. And people have shifted on my screen, did we lose somebody? Nope. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. So the uh pool project, as John McNerney referred to earlier, coming along quite well, the locker rooms. Uh, last time I saw, were very close to completion. And chief, you know, I was joking with Chief Friedman. Went from windows that needed to be replaced with some really nice plastic sheeting. And as they were doing their asbestos abatement, that's just not gonna cut it long-term though. And uh buttoning up that building. It's going to protect that historic landmark well into the future. Agenda item number ten, with council's approval, we're gonna remove that, we are not ready tonight. So we would like to skip agenda item number ten and move on to number eleven. And number eleven, resolution to declare the city of Cortland Common Council as lead agency for the seeker. Regarding the North Green Bush and Want, Washington Street Water Main Replacement Project. Um, let's see, motion to consider. Tom Michaels, second, Troy Beckwith, discussion. Hearing none. Uh, Rick, anything you want to inform the general public or council about before calling for a vote?
Um, this is just an extension of the uh, some of the gateway. Project that we've already declared ourselves lead agencies and have done a seeker. You will see in your package for the next item, the engineers have prepared a seeker. Uh, and you will be asked to ratify it and, and in effect amend the last seeker to include Washington and Green Bush, so that's what this is all about. It's just a, we're just moving out, branching a little bit.
Very good. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And yep, a lot more infrastructure work taking place, necessary things that we don't really think about. Those pipes under the ground though, they do wear out and it's important to replace them before. Catastrophic failures. So I'll call that one ten. So on your agenda, it's twelve, but I'm gonna renumber to eleven. For those you following at home. Consideration of resolution authorizing the city of Cortland Common Council to amend the city of Cortland Clinton Avenue project for the seeker project process. Uh, motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. And there's a whereas, whereas, there's a ton of wheres is on the. Application. And the resolved amended due to the project scope revision to include the water distribution system replacement along the North Green Bush and Washington Street. With the city remaining lead agency for the project. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. And the new number twelve, discussion, consideration of a resolution to supplement and amend previous bond resolution number eighty-three from two thousand and sixteen. And one ninety-five from the year two thousand and nineteen to increase the aggregate amount authorized to bond. Four million, uh shoot, there was. Is this the right amount, the four million, five hundred and fifty thousand to fund public purpose projects? Public purpose improvements at the water plant. Uh, motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second, Bruce Titler, discussion.
This is uh refinancing, this is gonna save us quite a bit of money. So I, I think that's important for the people in Cortland to realize.
It's a very good point, Bruce, you know, the water project, when I was talking about Chris Bastoki and the water plant upgrades. Put it in perspective, four and a half million dollars worth of upgrades. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen, resolution to authorize the publication of a stopper notice, the city's intent to issue. Four thousand, five hundred and I believe it's fifty thousand, four thousand, five hundred, fifty thousand dollars in bonds to fund. The reconstruction of the water production and treatment facility at the city's water treatment plant. Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, oh, hang on, before I ask, Rick, you've got your hand up, so let me start with you.
Four million, five hundred and fifty thousand.
Very good. Now, on the agenda, we had a revision and the agenda lists. Four, five, thirty-six, four, four point five, four million, five hundred and thirty-six, but it's the same as the previous, four million, five hundred and fifty thousand. Correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Alright, and I believe uh Katie, you had your hand up, so motion to consider, Katie Sullivan, do we have support? Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Very good, thank you. Kat, I saw your hand go up, but it went off the screen, so I missed it until the end. Item fourteen, resolution to change the job title of the administrative aide in the code office to account clerk typist, motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second, Katie Sullivan, discussion. Captain Tenkate is present. But I think it suffices to say that in terms of code and work. Uh, there is a demand, demonstrated demand in terms of responsibilities for an upgrade in terms of the job title.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And then number fifteen, resolution to approve a budget transfer of two thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. From A thirty-six twenty, fifty-four, fifteen, double O to A thirty-six twenty, fifty-one, and I think that's four zeros. This is to cover the job title change from administrative aide to account clerk typist, motion to consider. Tom Michaels, second, Katie Sullivan, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. And number sixteen, this is a discussion item at this point only, uniform press release policy for the city. Um, so the thought is to simplify and to make sure that we're clear in terms of who is on our distribution list. Establishing the policy in terms of. What we're doing and how we are contacting different entities. Uh, there it is, let me scroll through. So I included a draft for council's consideration. At the beginning of the year, having the mayor giving the opportunity for entities to sign up on the media distribution list. And also having the opportunity to choose what departments they want to receive updates from. Uh, mayor would designate who is responsible for maintenance of this list. Entities stay on the list unless there is confirmation, meaning a discussion between the city and the entity if they do want to be taken off of the list. And then the office, the mayor's office will share an immediate email list with all departments, including updates if and when they occur. Basically, we're looking at two potential lists, one would be ones. Media contacts for information specifically for city residents and stakeholders. And then one that would be more regional. Uh, news of import where we are potentially reaching out to media contacts. All the way up to. Um, TV stations out of Syracuse, Binghamton and potentially Ithaca if appropriate. And then we would have consistency in terms of departments using the distribution list put forward by the office. And when a press release is put out, goes out to all interested parties. And if there's requests from the media, man, saying that, hey, we are going to get back and. Uh, we will be responding to media requests within forty-eight hours. So there's been a lot of great work done by department heads and different departments sometimes deal with things. Separately, but I think for consistency sake and also for people to know, hey, who gets the press releases? It would be helpful for us to have basically a master list. Discussion.
I think that's a great idea.
Alright. So we'll have time to chew it over, think about it, and if there's no issues, concerns, or even if we're making some minor modifications. Bring it back to council at our May eighteenth meeting to consider uh formally adopting this policy. Thank you, everyone. And number seventeen, discussion, parking on Hubbard Street. Uh, so there, there was a request and we might have a community member, again, I need to look through my screen. Uh, not sure if we have a community member that was advocating for this that's still here.
We've lost quite a few.
I don't see him on here, Brian.
I can. So we, we can get started though and um. For those who are unaware, there was a request to allow odd even parking on Hubbard Street. Uh, as I think everybody knows, city streets, basically we were asking the streets to be. Basically, we were asking the streets to be cleared in the night. And what that does in particular for DPW, Public Works, when they need to plow, it makes it easier. The street cleaner getting around and especially this time of year, cleaning up the debris via gravel, dirt, other things that are starting to accrue in the gutter area, it's a lot easier when the streets are clear. Uh, there were some concerns when we started talking about this. Uh, for those who may not be aware, there was a petition that was signed by a number of residents on Hubbard Street.
Forty, over forty, back in June of twenty.
Very good, so there is a fair amount of support for it from residents of the street. Um, this did go, I believe, to our public safety committee, and the public safety committee did not support the change. Uh, off the top of my head, and I know that there were some safety concerns. Plowing uh, throughout the winter months was one. With the odd even, if somebody forgets or somebody does not do what they're supposed to, if you have cars on both sides. It will be difficult or potentially impossible for some emergency vehicles such as a fire engine to potentially make it down the street. Um. So the public safety committee weighed in and the request was to bring it to council. Troy, do you want to pick up from here or?
Yeah, firstly, um, I think we can get this worked out, I think we need to get a couple of public hearings set so we can hear from some people. And then uh, we can recommend back to DPW one more time, we'll come up with a solution or our, our plan or I can come up with a plan, and then we can go from there.
So suggestion, and I think that's a great one of public hearing. Um. Council supportive of public hearings?
Go ahead, Katie.
No, go ahead.
I have to say, I'm, I'm not a fan of this, um, of this change, I don't think it's a good idea, I think it's going to set a bad precedent in the rest of the city. Um, and I think that the safety board decided against it is a
There we go.
is a big negative for me.
Uh, Cat, and then Bruce?
I guess I just wanted to get clarification with the public safety commission not advocating for this. Did they provide um, any sort of like guidelines of if X, Y, and Z changed with the plan, they would be supportive, I guess? It seems like, you know, we have these commissions in place to provide guidance and they're saying that they don't believe it's a currently as it's being permitted or as it's being proposed, a good idea, so I just kind of want to understand that a little bit better.
Yeah, Cat, I, I think that they wanted to be presented with an actual program. Uh, that they could say, hey, this is why this doesn't work, or this is my concerns. Uh, I think they had concerns with uh, with the policing. Um, and I think that they obviously had concerns with, like right now, we have construction projects. And if, if you left your car in the street and went somewhere for a week, what do you do? They weren't totally opposed to it. Without a detailed program, they just said, hey, we, there's too many unknowns on this. And if we, you know, advocate it for Hubbard Street, uh, whether it's needed or not, does that mean that, you know, next year it's going to be twenty more streets or thirty more streets? And they had some concerns, uh, I think that they would be more opened to at least obviously listening again, if there was a detailed plan that took care of some of this stuff. Um, I'm not sure that's possible, uh, but maybe. Um, I, I think that just the um, act of saying, hey, we want parking on Hubbard Street, I think that they just it, it was too vague for them.
Thanks, that's really helpful clarification, and I guess I would just ask, you know, where in the process of what Troy's proposing, would we be looking at getting that plan together so that we could have it? Um, you know, reviewed thoroughly?
Sure. Um, yeah, go ahead, Troy.
Um, that's why I really wanted to have the public hearings, we can get some more input back by the other people, then we'll draft a proposal and get it over to DPW, and then we can obviously move to their decision.
Okay.
It's definitely going to be a pilot program, like first certainly foresee it, obviously, there's going to be some other parts of the city is going to come back and say, you know, we did for one, we do for the other, so we got to look at all that. But I really want to hear from some more people at the public hearings, when we do get a plan together, you know, we can cover some of that, so we're not going back.
Mayor. Oh, Bruce. I, I'd like to, I have some concerns I share with Katie, and I know there's some people on my ward that have already asked for something similar in the past. And I know the public safety commission said no since it's the first time around, but I was going to add, I don't think it was unanimous, I mean, there, there were some people that wanted to consider it, so Nick, I appreciate you filling in the details there. So I guess where I'm at is I'd like to give folks a chance to, to, you know, voice what they're thinking and have Troy create a plan and give it to the safety commission again and and see what they have to say, and I think that we go from there, I, I would be reluctant to just say no unilaterally because they said no the first time. Knowing that there's a lot more nuances to their decision, and so I'm, I'm willing to go forward with this, and just because we've never done this in the past, you know, maybe it's something we need to consider if it can be worked out uh, to, to most people's satisfaction. Um, and, and the safety concerns and the road repairs and all of that kind of stuff, but there, but you're right, Troy, and I think everybody realizes that it if the pilot program is successful, then there's going to be a lot of other streets that are going to want the same thing, so we have to consider that. And we also have to remember that because it's safe for some streets doesn't mean it's going to be safe for all streets, so we have to sort of be prepared for that too, so. That's, those are my thoughts, Mayor.
Tom Michaels.
We have many, many city streets, uh, that are awful, awful narrow to begin with, then and you have a car that's parked directly across from your driveway and you're trying to navigate either coming in or, or leaving. Is certainly uh, not a, uh, best solution to this, this problem. Uh, I'm, I'm more curious to see why there are so many people that insists that they should park in the street and not in the driveways.
Good question.
You know, we all have to park in our driveways, I don't know how many forty people in the Hubbard Street area where they have small driveways or yeah, what, what's, what's the story there, Troy?
A lot of them do have small driveways, a lot of them have been converted into multi-family houses over the years, which lately they've done, so you know, it's
And uh, the original proposer of the idea, Adam McGivern, is on, so if council would like to recognize, we can hear directly from Adam. Adam, your thoughts?
Yes, uh, thank everybody, I apologize for my tardiness, uh, Tim Bennett, thanks for the heads up that, uh, it made it to that agenda item. Uh, we tried to catch a shower after a long day at work and almost missed the entire conversation, so I, I apologize. Um, but I am always the optimist, it, it does sound like that, you know, with discussion. Um, there is, you know, a warming, if not an openness, uh, to the concept. Um, I know when we were talking about this, um, kind of when the whole world stopped, or at least was on pause previously. Um, a lot of things now are getting picked up. Um, and we're, we're starting to get some traction on, on following up on some things, so I really do appreciate Troy, uh, for getting this on the agenda. I appreciate all of you for, you know, being open to discussing it, uh, because I really think the, the issue for Hubbard is not unique. Um, but it may be unique in that there's consensus amongst the residents that we all want parking on the street. Um, it's for the betterment of our neighborhood, uh, it's as, as neighbors. Uh, we all share in a, a similar struggle, uh, whether we are a property owner, a renter, or whatever the unique situation, uh, within our household, we share the same problems in that it's very cumbersome, if not impossible, um, to, to make do with today's modern uh, use of cars in these old houses with small or shared or no driveway. Um, so we're being high, such a high density, we bring a lot to the city as far as property tax base, and we're just asking for, you know, use of that shared public space. It's proven to work in many cities. Um, I'd like us to give us a shot here in Cortland, see if it can work on Hubbard Street, and then make informed decisions on a street by street basis, if that's what the city desires, but I can tell you, you know, from living here, uh, working here, just conversation with my neighbors, it's, it's just a clear cut thing that we really, really would like you to move forward on. At least look at, you know, possible scenarios to alleviate some of the burden. I appreciate it, um, I'm willing to work in any way I can help, uh, but I just want to keep dialogue open, so thanks again.
Thanks, Sam.
Further discussion, council? All right, so Troy, you had suggested public hearing, are we talking at the next council meeting?
Um, yeah, because the following month, or I have, or the first Tuesday and June, we won't be having one, so let's go push it all the way to the end of June. Let's schedule one for the end, if we got room next end of this month, and we'll schedule the second one, the end of June.
Very good, May eighteenth, uh, public hearing, looking for public feedback input on the potential to have odd uh, on-street parking on Hubbard Street. Very good, thank you, everyone. And number eighteen, COVID nineteen update. If you've been following along in terms of the governor and the different rules and stipulation, you are aware that we are seeing a change or an increase in terms of what is allowed for public gatherings. Uh, business capacity limits, and this is effective May nineteenth, so not today, but very soon, two short weeks. Um. Business capacity limits are to be replaced with space available to maintain six foot of social distancing. So there's been a percentage in terms of how many people could be in different places of business, and the state is going to pay six feet of distance. And the exception to the rule, if there's partitions or other guides, uh, ways of breaking up the room, then indoor seating can increase. Outdoor social gathering limit will increase on May tenth to five hundred people. Outdoor social gathering, and an indoor social gathering can increase to two hundred and fifty on May nineteenth. Uh. Large-scale indoor venue capacity increases to thirty percent, large-scale outdoor venue increases to thirty-three percent on May nineteenth. And um, still looking for, they want proof of vaccination or recent negative test required in New York, there's going to be some questions that the state still needs to kind of work through here. But the idea is reopening and reopening smartly. Um, from speaking with restaurant owners, in particular in our downtown core, the seating capacity with the six feet distancing or the potential for petitions still is difficult. So tonight I'd like to reiterate the city's offer from last year. And council, let's talk about, is it worthwhile to once again, hey, we'll entertain ideas or recommendations from establishments, if there's ways that we can assist in terms of using public space to assist with uh, private enterprise in the downtown core, basically talking about outdoor seating, what can we do to help?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor, I agree, yes. I mean, the CDC is changing their guidelines uh, in regards to, especially if you're fully vaccinated when you're outside and, and what they're advising us, you know, they're, they're not as concerned about you. You don't have to wear the mask, and outdoor dining is, is going to be more acceptable, so, you know, first of all, I encourage everybody to get the vaccine because the discomfort I felt for one day is nothing compared to how much freer and nicer I felt taking a walk today without that mask on. And as I was walking out outside, it was just, was like a it, it was, it, it felt fantastic, so, you know, if you're tired of wearing the mask, I encourage everybody to get vaccinated. And the CDC is changing, it seems like, I think they're going to be changing them all through the summer. Uh, the guidelines and restrictions, I wouldn't be surprised if that continues to get modified. So, yeah, what do we can do to help people, I'm, I'm, I'm on board that.
I'm supportive of that as well, I know I heard from a resident last year who is very muchly so advocating for, you know, sidewalk uh, dining as well as considering even closing part of a street to, to provide outdoor seating, so um, you know, I think people are looking for options to support the local businesses as well.
So we'll have to reach out with some of our downtown business owners or stakeholders and say, hey, if you have ideas, if there's things that we can do to assist. Uh, we want to be good community partners and as things are improving. We want to try to make sure that we're moving along as effectively and smartly, and we're doing the right things, and we're not just throwing a dart at the board and hoping. Well, we've been very fortunate in our county despite the numbers at times being very challenging. And condolences to those who have lost loved ones or friends, it's definitely been a challenge for some more than others, but we want to try to do what we can to make sure that we are moving forward and getting back to a sense of normalcy. So I asked earlier for an executive session, the executive session. Um, asking council adjourned to executive session for discussion about a potential labor agreement with a bargaining unit in city. Um, and the potential for taking action afterwards does exist as well. So. Council, may I have an opportunity to adjourn into executive session, motion by Troy Beckwith, second, Jackie Chapman. All those in favor of adjourning into exec, executive session, please say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Can open up the room. And that should be open for council members to go in the breakout room. And we will be back shortly. And remembering to unmute. And we are waiting on one, two, three more people.
Two.
One.
Troy with the countdown, good job, oh, Jackie got booted, she's coming back, she's in the waiting room, give her a second. Some people have better wifi than others, there she is. One, two, three, four, five, six council members here, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Oops.
Troy Beckwith, second. Jackie Chapman, very good, all those in favor of adjourning from executive session, please say aye?
Aye.
Very good, we are back into our regular session, um, actually I have two agenda items. First one, resolution to approve the payment of the deputy superintendent of public works an additional two hundred and fifty dollars a week until a new superintendent of public works is hired and employed working for the city. Motion to consider. Cat McCarthy, second, Troy Beckwith, discussion.
It's worth it.
Yes.
I agree.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And the second, resolution to allow the mayor to sign an MOA memorandum of, under, uh, memorandum of agreement with the uh, Civil Service Employees Association, better known as the CSEA, to shift to summer hours for the time period of May tenth through August thirty-first. Uh, summer hours are six AM to three PM Monday through Thursday and six AM to ten AM on Friday, it's motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second, Katie Silliman, discussion.
I just wanted to ask, um, you listed those dates, is that specific to twenty twenty-one?
Yes, correct. We're talking May tenth of twenty-one through August thirty-first of twenty-one.
Thanks for that clarification.
And uh, will we make sure that that's communicated to the community in terms of new hours and, you know, when the, when the, the noise won't start until seven, hopefully, so you know, that's, that, that shower sleep is important to some folks.
Understood. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Wait, did I get a motion to consider first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Passes unanimously, thank you, I apologize, I'm looking at it, write it down. Is there any further business to come before the council this evening? Hearing none, we may entertain a motion to adjourn from Cat McCarthy, second, Katie Silliman, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See your faces.
For our last few days, Tom.
Yep, I will, thank you. See you soon.
Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.